Welcome you to the November 2 West Des Moines City Council Meeting. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Ryan, take roll.
Yes, Hardman.
President.
Trimble.
Here.
Trevillion.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
And Hudson.
Here.
Five members present.
Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
There is one change, Your Honor. Item 6C, there's a memo, it's a purchase agreement for 7630 Ashworth Road. There was a change needed in the notice, so that has been re-noticed and brought back likely in two weeks.
Okay.
Move approval of the agenda as amended.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the agenda as amended is approved. Item 2, Citizens Forum, which is the time for anyone in the audience who'd like to address the City Council to, on any item that's not part of public hearings, Item 6 or New Business, Item 7. Okay. Hearing no one, we'll move on to Mayor, City Council, City Manager, or other entity updates. We'll start with Item 3A, the 2020 Community Needs Assessment, West Des Moines Community School District. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me this evening. My name is Shawna Jansen, and I'm the Director of Community Education for the West Des Moines Community School District. And I'm just happy to be here tonight and to be able to share with you the project that we have been working on. It was our 2020 Community Needs Assessment. This is something that we do every five years in our department, and we learn valuable things about our school district and our community, and just wanted to share some of those insights with you today. So I mentioned that we do this every five years. Our purpose in doing this is really to understand the needs and concerns of community members and so that we can be responsive to them as a department, but also so that we can share the information that we learn with other entities who are also doing things for the betterment of our community. So this is led by our Community Education Advisory Council, which is made up of representatives from each of our different school districts, as well as several folks who are, for example, representatives of the city, like West Des Moines Human Services, the Public Library, law enforcement, so a variety of different groups of folks. This year, it was facilitated by myself and the project manager in my department, and we did narrow our audience a little bit this year to really kind of focus on students, parents, and guardians, and then professionals in our community who serve our students and families. And when I say "community," just to be clear about my definition there, we're talking about the communities that are served by the West Des Moines Community School District. So that does include a variety of sections of community. This year, we did focus groups, and we focused on eight different categories of focus groups, which I will share with you. The timing of our needs assessment, I think, is really important to understand. So we concluded it the Friday or the Thursday before spring break. So when you think about our world at that point in time and our world today, there are some significant things that have changed, and so anything that happened related to COVID, anything that's happened in response to the death of George Floyd, all of those important things that have been going on in our community would not be reflected in this particular information. And then we asked our community members four central questions, which I will share with you in just a moment. So these are the different groups of people that we talked to. So we got community-based professionals, and we tried to get people from a variety of entities, so from the faith community, from law enforcement, from nonprofits, from business, from a variety of different community sectors. And we also talked to school-based professionals, several different groups of parents and guardians, so kind of a general group of parents. And then we focused in on our Burmese and Hakachin speakers and Spanish speakers, because those are the two largest language groups in our school district, and then low-income families as well. And then we also talked to high school students, and again, a general population of high school students, as well as students in our English Speakers of Other Languages program. And these are the questions that we asked. We try to keep our community, our needs assessment, very general, so we're not trying to guide the conversation in certain ways, but to really hear and understand what folks have to tell us. So you can see that what makes our community a great place to live and go to school. We did ask about welcoming and inclusion. We asked about that because of what we had heard in the previous needs assessments, and I'll explain that a little bit more. And then we asked about any challenges or barriers that people face in our community, and then we also asked for ideas and suggestions to improve it. And then just a few slides here on the demographics, so you understand who it is we were talking to. If you look at the ages, you can see, I mentioned that we were targeting students and parents, as well as professionals, and so you can see in the age demographics, those are really represented there. You can see where we didn't, where if you look at the older population, we did not have as many of those folks represented within those groups. Seventy-five percent of the folks we talked to were women. That was not by design, but that women tended to be more responsive to the invitation and were able to attend more often than men. That was kind of an interesting result to us, because it also was very reflective of what we often see in the school district. When we see parent groups and things like that, we see a larger percentage of women attending than men. And then this is the racial and ethnic demographics of the folks that we saw. So we were very intentional, trying to have a very diverse group of people, because our goal was to get really diverse perspectives. And then we also asked about the languages that they spoke at home, and so, and they work, they could use more than one, but you can see there were a number of different language groups represented among the people who participated. We also asked about city residents, so almost 50% of them were residents of West Des Moines, and then the others were residents of the other communities that make up our school district. And the 15% represent people who were in professional roles, who work and serve in this community, but don't necessarily reside in the community itself. And we asked about length of residence in our community, and so you can see there was a variety there. And then we also asked about their current relationship to the West Des Moines Community School District. And so the majority of them currently had children attending or are currently students themselves, and then some had passed, and then a few of the folks have never had anyone attend our district. So when we categorized all of the groups of information, all the information that we saw, and we identified the top strengths. I did add another one on the bottom that didn't land in our top strengths, but I thought it would be of interest to you. And so the top thing we heard about was quality schools, which it's always nice to hear about that. And people really talked about having top-tier schools, caring staff, and really great programs within the school district. Most of the groups, so I'm sorry, when it says seven out of eight, so seven out of the eight categories of people mentioned that, that was a topic of conversation within their group. Opportunities were mentioned by six of the eight, and there they were really talking about both opportunities within the school district and within the community at large. They really very much value opportunities for youth, whether that's through the school or through parks and recreation, and they talked about there being something for everyone in this community. And they also felt like the opportunities that they have here are above and beyond opportunities that they would have if they lived anywhere else. Safety came up first in most of the groups that brought that up. Safety was top of mind. They talked about having safe neighborhoods, safe schools, and safe communities at large. So overall, the sense of safety was very important to folks. They also talked about safety in relationship to law enforcement. And a couple of the groups in particular, our students and our Latino group, talked about safety, and they talked specifically about positive relationships with law enforcement and the presence of law enforcement in connection to their perceptions of safety in our community. That small-town atmosphere came up quite a bit as well. And there they really talked about feeling connected to neighbors, feeling like they could get involved in the city in many different ways, and also valuing like city celebrations. And they just liked the fact that they felt like they had large city amenities, but with that still, that small-town feel. And then when it came to amenities, they brought up many things such as parks, trails, theaters, restaurants, libraries. Valley Junction always gets rave reviews. And then they also really valued and appreciated being in close proximity to necessities, things like pharmacies, grocery stores, hospitals, having things close by, and some people even talked about the importance of being able to walk to locations like that. Collaboration was also one of the top strengths that came up. They really talked about appreciating and recognizing how our cities, our schools, law enforcement, faith communities, business community, that people really work together for the good of the community, and that was something that they valued. Diversity was something else that came up quite a bit this time around, and people really felt like the diversity of this community was very attractive to people. Some of them talked about moving here specifically because of the diversity. Others of them talked about not leaving this community because of the diversity. They were concerned about moving somewhere else and missing out on that aspect, and they talked about that diversity being very beneficial for their children. Our human service organizations got rave reviews as well, so West Des Moines Human Services and Clive Community Services, people really valued those and saw those as very essential and important services that we were providing for the residents of our community. And then the last one that I added, this wasn't one, this didn't come up as one of the top ones, because you can see it was only, it only came up in one of the groups, but it was our larger community group. But they really talked about they valued the forward thinking of the city, that it was thoughtful, it was intentional, it was planful, and people had a sense of that and really valued that as part of the community. We asked folks to talk to us about welcoming and inclusion, and the reason we specifically asked this question was because 10 years ago when we did our Community Needs Assessment, one of the overwhelming things we heard from folks was, "Our demographics are changing." Our demographics are changing. And they would say that over and over again, that our demographics are changing, and people didn't really know what to do with that exactly. Five years later, when we talked to people, they were still talking a little bit about our changing demographics, but it changed a little bit, and the question became, "I'm not sure if we're ready for it. I'm not sure if we're very welcoming and inclusive. I'm not sure if we know how to make sure all folks feel welcome and included here." So this time around, we thought we would just ask that question to kind of take a pulse of where we're at and how we're doing in regards to that. So we asked folks to give us a rating on a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being the highest. Not everyone could give it a rating. Some people would talk to us about it, but they really didn't like putting a number on it. But for the folks who did, this is kind of how that came out. And so our average rating was a seven, which I thought was very favorable as a community that the majority of folks felt like it's a welcoming and inclusive place to be. So that was very encouraging to me. That doesn't mean that there's not room for growth, but that was positive. A couple of other things, if I move to the next slide. So our average rating among the parent groups we talked to was 7.4 to 8.4. Our average high school rating was a seven. Our ESOL students, who are English Speakers of Other Languages, gave it the highest rating of anyone. So their feeling of welcoming and inclusion in the school and in the programs they're involved in was extremely positive. And positive overall, when we talked to people, having positive experiences with their neighbors and in their schools made it a welcoming environment for them. And then the flip side was true. If they had very minimal interaction with their neighbor, or they never, their neighbor barely said hi to them when they got out of the car, or if they had challenging situations that they had dealt with in their school, those things felt very unwelcoming to them. They talked about many positives. They could identify individuals, they could identify specific schools, churches, our human service organizations, and some of our other ethnic-based community organizations that were very welcoming places, that they really felt very welcomed, and that they felt were being very intentional about being welcoming and inclusive. What was interesting is that when you go back to that graph, you see there are some outliers there. There are some twos and threes down there, and fours, and actually, yeah, and the fives. The lowest ratings actually came from the folks who were part of our city and schools as staff. And they came from people who were not being critical, but they were people who, they work in these, they work on this, and they've done a lot of work, and they see, gosh, there's more room to go. So they were being, they're probably the closest to it, and felt like that there was more that needed to be done. And oftentimes, when they talked about that, they were talking about systems, like that some of our systems are not as welcoming as maybe we can be on a more individualized Then when we asked about the challenges, so one of the biggest challenges that came up was this idea of access to resources. Some of the barriers that get in the way were awareness of the resources, time, so time constraints as far as when those resources were accessible to people, and then waiting lists for some more of the, some of the more like critical type services. A second one was issues at school. So schools were ranked very positively, but issues at school was right up there as well. Things there that came up were a lot of the social-emotional issues surrounding kids, including bullying, some parents feeling like there's a growing lack of order among students, and how our staff to handle that. And then, and students themselves talked about, that they really need to start talking about more difficult topics, and that they really need their adults to get more comfortable with it, because these are things that they're dealing with and experiencing, and they need to have safe places to have those conversations, even if they're uncomfortable. Navigating our schools was another big challenge that came up, and it's interesting, it came up in, this came up among most of our different parent groups, whether they were a first-time kindergarten parent, whether they had just moved into the community, whether they were, you know, now all of a sudden they're in junior high, and that's a whole, feels like a whole new experience, certainly for our language learner families who are coming here from another culture and completely learning the nature of our school district. And then it was also brought up by students, our high school students talking about how they have such a wealth of opportunities, which is fantastic, but knowing which direction to go and which ones of those they should pursue was really challenging, and they could use more help navigating that. So it came up in many different ways. Language and cultural barriers also came up specifically from our, often from our language learner groups, just the challenges that they have, needing interpreters, not having as many interpreters, and then specifically when it came to having to have kids interpret for them, and in particular, they mentioned that in, within interactions with law enforcement, you know, situations where you just don't really want your kids to have to be in the midst of that conversation. Racism and inequity also came up in several of our groups. Among our language learners, they would talk about experiences where people would speak down to them or treat them poorly because they weren't maybe speaking the language, if they were speaking their native language, and having that, having people react to them negatively as a result of that. And it also came up in our school groups. Our high school students talked about it as a concern of just something that we really need to address on a deeper level, and then also recognizing that, for example, our staffing doesn't mirror our student population, and that they see that as an inequity, and some inequity between schools, where some schools maybe have more resources available to them than other schools appear to. Financial hardship came up in a variety of different ways. So it either was mentioned as just poverty in general, but also affordable housing, affordable childcare, affordable activities for kids, and then earning a living wage. So it was mentioned in a variety of different contexts. Transportation didn't, has come up in every one of our needs assessment. It didn't come as much up as much this time. This time, it came up in the context of being a barrier for youth to participate in things. And then when it came to public transportation, people actually talked about some, that that has, that that has, they've seen improvements with public transportation, but that's sometimes still a little challenging to navigate. And then the last one that I added on there that came up in a couple of the groups was image, and people talked about the image of our community or the perception sometimes of our community, that we're not a very diverse community, speaking racially, ethnically, and socioeconomically, and they felt like that that was harmful to our community, that people sometimes didn't recognize that, and also that it could get in the way of, could possibly get in the way of addressing some of the challenges and concerns if we're concerned about image. So that was another topic that came up. And then I didn't list all the ideas and suggestions here, but I just wanted to show you some of the categories of ideas and suggestions that came up. My group that works on this, we start looking through and sorting through some of these ideas and suggestions, and matching them up with some of the needs or things that we could maybe improve upon, and that's kind of the work that my committee will be doing over the next several years to see what types of things we can put in place. All of the full information is available in our full report, and I did give Mr. Jacobson a copy of that, so with the link to the full report. I have them in paper copy if you would prefer that, but I know a lot of people don't really like paper, so I also have it electronically, so you can look at any of the full information that you'd be interested in. And then lastly, these are just some of the conclusions that we came to, that participants really value living in our communities and they value their quality of life here. It was overwhelmingly positive. Diversity is really seen as an asset in our community. We were excited about the positive feedback on welcoming and inclusion and recognizing that there's still room for growth, but that we're making good strides. Navigating schools is a challenge that I mentioned to you, and parents specifically talked about having mentors or having people that could help them navigate along the way. And what's interesting is most people who, many people already have that. So if you're, if you live in this community and you're fairly well-networked, you do have that informally, right? You have the person you call and say, "Hey, what did you do when your child was in junior high, and what did you do about this?" But there are so many people who don't have that kind of a network, so they were asking, "Can you help us create that network?" And then the idea that resources are very available, I think people recognize that our community is resource-rich, we're very blessed with many resources, but they're not always accessible to the people who may need them most. And then one of the things that really came up loud and clear was that people, having a voice in our community and schools, was important to people. Again and again, people thanked us for being invited to the table, they thanked us for asking their opinion, they think, "And I know you do that in the city, and I know that we do that in our school district, and I don't think we can probably do too much of it," because people really value having a voice and making a, being able to make a positive impact in their community and in their schools. So with that, I want to thank you very much for allowing me to share this information. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but I really appreciate your time.
Thanks, Shawna. That's really good information, and we're working diligently as a city on a lot of those issues as well, so it's great to share information back and forth. And I know we've got folks at the city and school district on various boards and commissions working together, so that's great, and we appreciate access to the full report. So Ryan, you'll email that out to us.
Will do.
Does any council member have any question for Shawna?
Go ahead, go ahead. I just want to thank Shawna for presenting this to the council. This is really important information, and, you know, we work so hard here on quality of life and economic development, and, but our number-one economic development driver is our schools. And so this information's extremely important to us, and I really appreciate all that you guys have done to gather this information, and great presentation. And like the mayor said, we're going to continue to work on all these things and improving in all these different areas. We can only get better. So I also want to just bring up really quickly, while I see him here in the back of the room, that one of the things that people really value here was safety, and we've got one of our SROs, Officer Cuevas, sitting in the back of the room here. And I tell you, I got pulled into his world for a little bit, and I got to experience just a little bit of the things that he deals with in the school system. And I can tell you, this man is unbelievable, the job that he does and that our SROs do to keep our kids safe. I can never thank him enough for what he does, and I'm telling you, to go there and see what these guys do, it's unbelievable. So just want to thank him.
Renee?
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Trimble. I'd like to also thank you, Shawna, for a wonderful presentation. I liked the way it was laid out. I liked the thoroughness of it, and I really liked where you shared both positive things that's going on well, but opportunities we can strengthen, so I really like that. And as I looked at your list, it looks as though it aligns itself with some of the things the Human Rights Commission is doing, and other parts of the city is focusing in on. So I think we're all in alignment if we continue to communicate and have this knowledge and keep that in the forefront. But I also want to make a personal note about Shawna. Shawna is a person that not only sits in her office and gets her job done, she's out in the community. And as many of you know, we have a monthly community dialogue forum discussion on lots of issues, lots and lots of issues. And there's probably not been one meeting where I haven't seen Shawna come to those meetings, share her thoughts. So it's a true example of how a professional that's in this world working but wants to be on the forefront of hearing what are the issues and what are people talking about, and where's the pain points. And so Shawna, I applaud you for that, because you could be at home, taking care of your family, but you're out in the evening, sometimes at nine o'clock at night, now you're organizing these monthly sessions and organizing some of them. So it doesn't go unnoticed that you're committed to this work and you're committed to this community, so I really thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, go ahead, Greg.
I was going to say, and it should be kind of echoing what Councilwoman Hardman said, the work that community education does, it does exactly that, education for the community. And so the work that you and your team do is amazing, and I think, being an employee of the West Des Moines School District, the fact that we can work together as a city and a school district, I think that that relationship can continue to expand, and as it expands, because one thing that kind of stuck out to me in the presentation you just gave, seems like we have a lot of resources, but not everybody always knows about those resources. From a communication standpoint, I look forward to us working together even more and more and more, and that way all of our residents can just be aware of all of these things, because we do have great amenities, we do have great opportunities. But for someone who just moved to the community who doesn't have that person that they called up, hey, what'd you do, as you said earlier? I look forward to working more and more between the city and the school district, because so much work can be done, and our residents will definitely appreciate it. So thank you, Shawna, for all the work you do with Community Ed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna.
City Council reports, Matt.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items here. First, I want to say, we have a couple people in the audience that, you know, they show up regularly, Matt with the Historic Valley Junction Foundation, and Catherine with the West Des Moines Chamber. Appreciate the fact that they come here to these meetings, it just, you know, ensures that we have a good relationship with these important community partners.
I thought it's because we were so exciting, is why they...
Yeah, rager.
Actually, they're afraid of us, I think.
Probably.
That's Southwest.
So this morning, Councilwoman Hardman and I had a good and productive development planning subcommittee meeting, and we continue to see a lot of great projects, more developments in our community, interest in investing in the city of West Des Moines. We saw that in the building report that was released today. It was about 122 permits, nearly $110 million worth of investment over the last, just month in terms of permits being sought. So it was a good meeting this morning. This last week, we had a Public Arts Advisory Commission meeting, and the Arts Commission's doing a lot of very good work, but they're also very cognizant of the budget restrictions because of the hotel-motel taxes and the impact that the pandemic has had on travel and leisure and as a result then. And they declined to move forward on a particular project, and in doing so, the chair, Jeff Phillips, and Commissioner Rita Luther had specifically mentioned the interest in showing the council that the commission is a good steward of funding. And so I told them during that commission meeting that I'd bring that to the council here, because they were very cognizant of it, and it was important that they let the council know that. So at that point, that's all, Your Honor.
Kevin?
Nothing this time, Your Honor.
Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick reports. We had our quarterly convention and Visitors Bureau meeting with members of the board from around the metropolitan area, and CBB, they're doing the best with what has been kind of placed on their plate, which is very, very little hotel-motel tax funding, considering the pandemic. And so they have made a few cuts, and they're trying to lean things up a little bit. But I just wanted to let everybody know that they are working to continue to bring events as best as they can, as I look forward to 2021 and 2022. In our last community compliance subcommittee meeting, both councilmen, Trevillion and I, encouraged community compliance as they patrol the city to be more proactive in addition to just responsive and reactive, and so hopefully we'll see that a little bit more. And finally, we have our 59th presidential election tomorrow, and so I just wanted to encourage everyone, if you're on the phone or in person, if you already haven't, be sure to vote, because on Wednesday, the election will be over, and life will go on in West Des Moines and around the country, and we will continue to have an awesome city where you can live. And we will continue to have an awesome city where you can live and laugh and work and play and go to school and live the best life that any resident is living in the state of Iowa, nay, America. So life will go on, but I wanted to encourage you to vote because it's an important thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Russ?
Yeah. The Polk County Disaster Recovery Advisory Committee continues to meet and discuss ways that we can help our citizens and businesses get through COVID-19. They're working to create a stay safe pledge for businesses, coming up with some kind of reward incentive for businesses to do the right thing and be recognized for that. The committee works with the Greater Des Moines Partnership to secure heaters for restaurant patios as we continue to go through COVID-19 and try to make sure that people are safe and socially distanced and can still sit out on those patios, although it's going to get pretty cold here, not this week, but coming up. And they're working with retired folks through AARP, I believe, and with Service Corps volunteers to try to get help for small businesses as they prepare to apply for another round of PPP loans if they become available. They're also, the committee's asking that we as elected officials continue to help get the message out when it comes to wearing masks, socially distancing, shopping local, dining in, or carrying out food from local restaurants. And so they just ask that we kind of keep the awareness going, you know, with social media posts and other things and just continue to be good role models for the rest of our citizens. That concludes my report.
Renee?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to echo the sentiments of getting out the vote. So thank you so much for bringing that up. That's our voice and our right. So I'm wearing my mask that says vote, so as a reminder to ask everybody to get out there and do their civic duty and wear your mask. I too am getting a number of calls and letters about mask and mask mandate, and I know some of you are as well. So, you know, I know that we address that as it's the governor's responsibility to put forth mandate. And I recognize and understand that, but you know, as an elected official, I'm going to sit here and say I'm encouraging everyone to wear masks and social distance. I think that's the way in which we can help curb this. We are certainly on the rise. Our numbers are on the rise. And again, I'm going to just say here, as people see and watch, I am really encouraging people to do the right thing and respect others. And when you're in proximity with others, wear a mask. So I share with my constituents that I was going to use my voice on this dais to do that. And I'm honoring that wish and encouraging it as deeply as I can. I want to just say, Councilman Trevillian and I had the honor of attending a ribbon cutting of the West Des Moines Library Kiosk in Valley Junction. It was very nice. It was a chilly little day, but we were there supporting the library extension and making sure that that goes well. And I think this is the first in the state that we have an outside kiosk that allow young people and folks my age and younger and older to check out books right there accessible, right in the middle of the neighborhood. So I really like that. I really like the accessibility of having books available. And again, was proud to go out there with Councilman Trevillian to congratulate the folks for the West Des Moines Library Kiosk. And then the Human Rights Commission, or an extension of that, has a committee that has formed a Martin Luther King Planning Committee, and they have been meeting. And Catherine's a part of that committee, she's been drafted, and she has eagerly stepped in to try to help us make this a really big event, although we know we're going to be still dealing with COVID in January, we'll have some kind of a hybrid. But there is a group of folks that, and Shawna's on that as well, that are meeting and coming up with some really neat ideas to get youth involved in essay contests and Youth of the Year and Adult of the Year and lots of learning opportunities. So look for really good programming, Mayor, look for you for proclamation. And we're planning some really exciting things to continue to keep the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior alive. And I appreciate those that are in the audience that are sharing their expertise to help do that. More to come.
Tom?
Your report, Your Honor.
All right, item four is the consent agenda. Are there any items that any council member wants to pull?
Mayor, I've got just an item out of abundance, a caution for I. It's one, three, four, six, seven, and eight.
One, three, four, six, seven, and eight. Okay. Need a motion for the rest of...
I would move the remainder.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, those items pass. Item I, the resolution to approve professional services agreements, one, three, four, six, seven, and eight. Matt, conflict, potential conflict of interest?
Correct, Your Honor.
Okay, someone want to move those?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll show Matt abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Item five, old business. Item five A, Bridgewood Northeast and Southeast corners of 81st Street and Bridgewood Boulevard to men plan unit development setback requirements. Bridgewood Associations, Inc., this is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration the second reading.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
Five yes, and ordinance amended city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, and ordinance numbers 1276, 1322, 1335, 1401, 1438, 1482, 1628, 1748, 1809, 1962, 1998, 2198, 2219, 2220, 2331, and 2361 pertaining to plan unit development, district regulations, and guidelines.
Move approval, second reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Move waiver, the third reading, and adoption in final form.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that item's approved. Item five B, amendment to city code Title IX zoning, Chapter Seven setback in bulk density regulations. Modify when the average front yard setback requirement is applied, city initiated. This also is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes from the first reading.
Move the second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
Five yes, and ordinance amended city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by many Title IX zoning, Chapter Seven setback in bulk density regulations, Section Four setback in density regulations to modify when the average front yard setback requirement is applied.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Okay, move approval of the third reading and final adoption.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that ordinance is approved. Item five C, amendment to city code Title III business and licensing, Chapter Six massage establishments and technicians. Update application requirements for massage therapy business license, city initiated. This also is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration the second reading.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Got it.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
Five yes, and ordinance amended city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by many Title III business, Chapter Six massage establishments and technicians, Section Five license applications regarding license application requirements.
Move approval, the second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Move to waive the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That ordinance also is now approved. Item...
I'd just like to say on this, and I know that Councilman Tremble would agree with me because we discussed this in public safety, this really is a really good example of how we listen to the voices of the people. And they came in and they made a really good argument about how we were an outlier. And Chief Scott researched things and recognized that, and so we incorporated this. So I'm really pleased the way things work and that we're not just, this is the way it is, our way or the highway, that we're willing to listen and make adjustments when we know that we're a little bit interested in good businesses here in town.
Yep, and we're still able to crack down on the bad actors and we've got a very good ordinance in place to do that. And so, you know, we made those necessary changes. And again, thanks to Chief Scott for bringing it forward. It just makes sense what we're doing here.
All right, item six A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Glen Oaks PUD parcel L, northwest corner of Raccoon River and Grand Avenue. Amend the plan unit development to remove a portion of parcel L from the PUD. Amend the comprehensive planned land use map to change the property from support commercial to office and consistency zone the property to office initiated by JCG Equity LLC. Ryan, would you please date the notice was served?
October 16th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commission, by a vote of seven yes, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the PUD amendment, comp plan amendment, and consistency zoning.
Okay, and now would be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on item six A. And if you happen to be on the phone and you want to address the council, make sure you hit star six.
... with Bishop Engineer.
Okay.
Did you get me there?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the council for entertaining our motion here today. Also want to thank city staff for several months we've been working together on this project and... Did you get me there?
Yes, we can hear you.
A little echo.
Okay, want to let you know that we have the owner and our design team and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, no, I appreciate that. It indicates there's no outstanding issues. So is there anyone, is there anyone else that wants to address the council on item six A as a part of the public hearing? Okay, hearing known, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We've got three items which we have to take separately. First item is an ordinance for approval of the first reading of the PUD amendment.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Any questions or comments? And I note this came through Development and Planning Council Committee as well.
Yes, it did.
Yeah, I don't, I think we, I didn't think we had any issues with it. I think it's a, it looks like a fantastic project. I'm excited to see it move forward.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
Five yes, and ordinance amended city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, and ordinance numbers 1007, 1043, 1047, 1063, 1156, 1568, and 1720 pertaining to plan unit development, district regulations, and guidelines.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the first reading's approved. Item two is a resolution to approve the comprehensive plan amendment.
Move approval of the comprehensive plan amendment.
Second.
Questions or comments on the comp plan amendment? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the comp plan amendments approved. And the last item, an ordinance to approve the first reading of the consistency rezoning.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments on that? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions?
Five yes, and ordinance amended official zoning map in the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by many Title IX zoning, Chapter Four zoning districts and map.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, first reading's approved. Item six B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Glen Oaks, south of Mills Civic Parkway at Glen Oaks Drive. Amend the plan unit development to remove PUD parcels K and K1. Add property to parcel E and change the zoning from open space to medium density residential. And add property to parcel G and change the zoning from open space to residential single family, initiated by GOCC Investments LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
October 16th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commission, by a vote of seven yes, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the PUD amendment.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on item six B. Okay, hearing known, I'll declare the public hearing closed. The council communication indicates there's no outstanding issues. So we have an ordinance for the first reading. I think this will add three additional residential units to Glen Oaks, so more people that can come and live in our community. So someone want to move the first, the first reading?
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ryan?
Five yes, and ordinance amended city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, and ordinance numbers 1007, 1043, 1047, 1063, 1156, 1568, and 1720 pertaining to plan unit development, district regulations, and guidelines.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? First reading's approved. Item six C, I guess the communication says to be withdrawn. Should we just continue it since there was a notice error, Dick, or do we have to officially withdraw it?
We'll have to renotice it, Your Honor, so it's better to withdraw this. We'll renotice.
Okay, someone want to move to withdraw this item so we can renotice it?
Some would.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that item was withdrawn. Item six D, the council's being asked to continue this to the November 16th council meeting.
Move continuation.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item six E, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Sugar Creek conveyance improvements, Phase Two, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
October 23rd, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on item six E. All right, hearing known, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together, and this came through the Public Services Council Committee as well.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, those items are approved. Item six F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Grand Avenue West Segment Three and Four sewers, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?